So, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Trustees' Special Public Work Session Agenda. Today's date is May 7, 2021, and the time is 2:14 PM. As per usual, I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, just so the public knows, this is, again, the Village of Southampton Board of Trustees' meeting scheduled for May 7, 2021. The meeting has begun, but we will move into executive session, and then the public work session will immediately follow the executive session at approximately 2:45 PM. This session will be taking place using video conferencing, and the meeting will be livestreamed, and its transcript will be provided at a later date. There will be no public comment during this special meeting. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, for the purpose of...
For the purpose of discussing contractual litigation and specific village personnel matters.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to return to public session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just for the record, there was no actions taken during executive session, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you to our task force. We have our Chair, Craig Goldberg, with us. Elena Williams is present as well. We have Bob, Tom, and Dr. Key also present on the Zoom meeting. So at this point, I will turn this over to Craig Goldberg, our chairperson.
Thank you, Mayor. Turning to our first slide in the introduction, in terms of background information. Village Trustees engage Edmond Hartnett Risk Management to process the operations of the Southampton Village Police Department. Regarding Mr. Hartnett, he is a former Deputy Chief of the New York Police Department and former Police Commissioner of New Yorkers. Mr. McCabe, his partner, is Associate Professor of Criminal Justice at Sacred Heart University and served with the NYPD for 21 years. Both these individuals are highly experienced and very well-regarded across the country for providing consulting and evaluation services to police departments. The trustees formed the Southampton Village Police Review Task Force to review the Hartnett report and were appropriate to make recommendations for personnel and operating changes to operate the SVPD more efficiently and effectively. I'd like to point out that this is purely from our point of view and analytical exercise. The members of the task force express their own political views, and we are all very much in favor of a strong law enforcement presence. Presently, the police department budget represents approximately 45% of the total village operating budget, and if the cost of the Village PD is left unchecked, will further strain the resources of the village, resulting in either budget deficits and shortfalls in other services or presumably an increase in taxes. Most tellingly is the village's unfunded pension and other retirement liabilities, which stood at $110 million as of the last fiscal year, and if we better manage personnel costs now, we will slow the further increase of the unfunded pension liability. This size of pension liability is not unique to the village. This is an issue that state and local municipalities across the country are wrestling with now. It's how to manage this and how to pay for these liabilities. What we'd like to do now is provide a brief overview of the findings, and then we will go into specific areas. Based upon several metrics analyzed by the Hartnett Group, the Village PD is poorly managed with respect to utilization of personnel and taxpayer funds. In particular, the patrol schedules are suboptimal, resulting in officers working fewer hours than contractually obligated to. There is reportedly a complete failure to manage overtime and sick pay, which is costing the village hundreds of thousands of dollars unnecessarily. Sick pay and overtime are, and I'm quoting from the Hartnett Report, egregiously out of line with other police departments. The Southampton Village PD is donating costly resources to other localities and constituencies, including the East End Drug Task Force, the School District, overtime for special events, and they're employing an expensive K-9 unit without benefit or cost reimbursement to the village. The operating policies and procedures are out of date and not adhered to. Outside private work policies, according to the Hartnett Report, do not conform with good police practice and present significant conflict of interest issues. Off-duty use of departmental vehicles and equipment exposes the village to significant liability. Lastly, the radio dispatch unit, the Detective Division, and the CRU, which is the Community Response Unit, lack proper supervision and are not well-managed, as outlined by the Hartnett Report. With that, let me shift to specific findings. Let me go first to the collective bargaining agreements. Recommended changes by the Hartnett Group, and to a certain extent in our report, can be implemented without renegotiating the existing collective bargaining agreements or CDAs. However, the collective bargaining agreements approved by prior administrations and the contact with the chief were highly favorable to employees to the material detriment of the village. The existing collective bargaining agreements will limit the ability of the trustees to implement certain recommended changes that could save the village additional millions in expenditures with no degradation in service levels. It is important for the trustees to focus what the village can afford to budget for the police and dispatch operations, not what other municipalities are budgeting. This is, as we all know, in Suffolk County, law enforcement is paid a great deal, and if we look at comparables, we're not out of line, but that doesn't necessarily mean we can afford it. Any recommended reductions in officer headcount will not only reduce current expenditures, but will reduce the unsustainable growth in unfunded pension liabilities or retirement liabilities. With that, we'll go to specific divisions, first being the Patrol Division, which is the largest division. The present village patrol shifts conform with the Suffolk County Police Department shift schedule, which does not make sense for a small department. The present shift schedule is materially inefficient, results in much higher overtime, night shift differential, and ineffective utilization of patrol officers and supervisors. Proposed changes to the shift schedule are permitted under the collective bargaining agreements, since the proposed changes would not result in officers working more hours or days than specified under their contracts. Under the existing shift schedule, officers actually owe the village hours that should be utilized for training and other activities. Presently, training is done almost exclusively on an overtime basis. The recommended changes to the patrol shift schedules are complicated, and further work will be required before specific recommendations can be made. The Hartnett Report spent several pages discussing patrol shifts. It's very hard for civilians to understand, and what we would recommend is that the Village Trustees and the chief start to work on that project. One other aspect with respect to Patrol Division is that many arrest statistics are likely inflated by traffic stops for expired registrations, and they're being classified as an arrest versus as a traffic violation. The Hartnett Group recommends that the Village PD should focus more on more serious traffic violations, such as speeding, running stoplights and stop signs, and driving under the influence. As some people may know, the village has deployed automatic license plate readers, and then if somebody drives by a reader with an expired tag, a signal or a call is sent to a police officer, and then they make the traffic stop or the arrest for the expired registration. Next, moving on to the Detective Division. Given the low crime rate in Southampton Village and below-average clearance rates, it is difficult to justify the village maintaining a dedicated Detective Division. Major crimes are investigated by detectives in superior departments. By that, I mean the town, or the county, or the state police, whereas the Village Police detectives investigate all above the crimes. This is not a criticism of the Detective Division, but homicides and other major felonies typically go to larger departments. Notably, over the past four years, 98% of the crimes investigated by the detectives were property crimes. I believe the number was something like four or five violent crimes that were investigated over the past four years. Looking to the performance of the Detective Division, their clearance rate, which is defined as prosecution of a subject, was 18% versus an average of 22.3% for other small community-based departments. Per the Hartnett Report, the assignment of cases is very good. However, ongoing case management is substandard. The case management system that we have now is paper-based and needs to be converted to an electronic case management system, and I believe that the department is moving in that direction. What the report found is that there is no substantial crime analysis or criminal intelligence to spot trends or to hit problem areas. Furthermore, the detective scheduling does not conform to standards. Presently, there's usually one detective on duty, and to the extent that an investigation is required, that detective will pull an officer on patrol. The recommendation, in lieu of eliminating the Detective Division, the recommendation is to maintain the Detective Sergeant and one detective. Next, we'll be on to the K-9 unit. Maintaining a K-9 unit is very expensive. Based upon the Hartnett analysis, the K-9 unit provides zero benefit to the village. Furthermore, the K-9 unit works a shift from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM, which could not be explained and is inconsistent with shifts for other K-9 deployment. Typically, K-9s are deployed during the day shift when there's the most activity. The way the K-9 unit is scheduled presently generates significant night shift differential pay. The K-9 unit and its handler report every week to Suffolk County PD for training. Per the Hartnett Report, this is excessive, unnecessary, and counterproductive. Essentially, one day out of the five-day rotation is in training. What the report also found is that the K-9 unit is being deployed mainly by other local municipalities without reimbursement to the village. Our recommendation to the trustees is that this is a decision where this is an expensive unit. It's not justified in a small department, but it's in their purview to determine whether or not this is a resource they want to maintain. Moving on to the East End Drug Task Force. The Village PD has contributed an officer or a detective to the task force for many years. It is considered to be a career enhancement position for a sergeant or a captain. Typically, the sponsoring agent of the task force, in this case, it's the Suffolk County District Attorney, reimburses police agencies for the cost of officers assigned to the task force. This is not the case with the East End Drug Task Force. The Village Police Department bears the full cost of the assigned individual. Per the Hartnett Report, no member assigned to the East End Drug Task Force received little in the way of supervision or oversight from his superiors. His overtime apparently goes unchecked by the Village PD, and that's a direct quote from the report. This individual submitted $85,000 in overtime in the prior fiscal year without adequate support. Per the Hartnett Report, they were unable to ascertain any clear benefit that the SVPD and the village derives from having a member assigned to the East End Drug Task Force. Again, this is not necessarily a criticism of the Village PD. The Suffolk County DA loves having free members or free resources on their task force, but they should pay for those. In terms of the Village PD's contribution to the task force, it resulted in no violent crimes solved, no wanted suspects located, no local gangs dismantled, and no tangible impact on the local opioid crisis. There is no MOU or memorandum of understanding in place for the Village PD to share in forfeited assets, which can be sizable. As many people know, if you're arrested for a major crime, the arresting police agency can seize assets, and typically, those assets are distributed to task force members to supplement or reimburse them for the cost of the task force. We do not have an MOU in place, and reportedly, the only forfeited asset received by the Village PD was one used vehicle. School resource officers. The two school resource officers are doing an excellent job. They're very well-regarded, and it's good to have them in the high schools. However, the current SRO shift schedule runs from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which does not cover the dismissal time from the schools. We recommend that the shift schedule start one hour later to cover school dismissal at 3:00 PM. Interestingly, the village bears 100% of the cost of school resource officers at a cost of over $400,000 a year. However, the town of Southampton School District should reimburse the Village PD for the cost of the school resource officers, since the schools fall under the purview of the town, not the village. And typically, when police departments do provide school resource officers to schools, the school district should share equitably in the cost of providing those police officers, reflecting the fact that the schools are only in session for part of the year. Radio dispatch. The radio dispatch department receives an average of 1.5 calls per hour, or 15 calls. That's not...it's about 30 calls per day. There is absolutely no economic or operational justification for maintaining a standalone radio dispatch unit at an annual cost of budgeted of $1.9 million for fiscal year. It should say 2021 and 2022. Based upon Hartnett Report and other research, the radio dispatch function can be transferred to a superior agency without any impact on response time and coverage. Existing dispatch technology is highly advanced, and there is no benefit of having radio dispatchers physically located within the village proper. Notably, several other local municipalities have contracted radio dispatch to a superior police agency in Suffolk County. And then lastly, the radio dispatch operation has, quote-unquote, "an egregious amount of overtime and sick time." The radio dispatch department is not being properly managed, and personnel who claim the most sick time also tend to receive the most overtime, which is counterproductive. Policies and procedures, which are a very important aspect governing the operation of the police department. We found that the policies and procedures need to be updated and reformatted by topic. Presently, if a policy or procedure is implemented or revised, it goes in chronological order, which makes following the policies and procedures more difficult. It is found that the policies are not clear, and they are not being adhered to in many cases. In particular, the policy regarding off-duty employment needs to be revisited. Allowing officers to work off-duty in the village and the town of Southampton raises significant conflict of interest issues. In other departments, you are not allowed to work off-duty in the case of the NYPD in your precinct, in other police departments in your patrol sector. Reportedly, the chief and other senior members of the police department have private security businesses that operate in the village and the town. Such arrangements, as I mentioned, would not be allowed in other police departments because of conflict of interest. Furthermore, the chief has the ultimate discretion to approve off-duty employment, which also prevents conflict of interest issues. Use of vehicles and equipment for off-duty use should immediately be prohibited. Detectives should not use departmental vehicles for commuting. We found that, or what the Hartnett Group found is that use of vehicle and equipment off-duty exposes the village to potentially significant liability and higher insurance costs. Lastly, there is a policy prohibiting political activity while on duty and in uniform, and that policy needs to be enforced. The task force was sent photographic evidence of police officers in uniform distributing political material, and that should be investigated further. Hiring practices. The Village PD needs to revisit its hiring practices and search for more diversified candidates. Notably, the last 10 hires by the Village PD were white males. The requirement for applicants to be village residents at the time of application is being abused. Once hired, police officers are not required to be village residents. Reportedly, only one or two officers are currently village residents. The task force received documentation that a white male candidate related to senior Village PD officers was offered employment over a black female candidate who scored higher on the civil service exam than the white candidate, because at the time of the opening, the female candidate was not a village resident. The male candidate temporarily established residency in the village just before the posting opened, and was subsequently hired. This accusation of nepotism and hiring discrimination needs to be investigated further. Summary and recommendations. You know, we'd like to emphasize that the men and the women of Southampton Village PD are well-trained, they're highly professional, and they're very well-regarded by the community. You know, in my personal experience of living in the village for over 30 years, I believe that the officers are doing an excellent job. Any criticism of the Village Police Department relates to how it is being managed. We'd like to thank the officers for their dedication to their jobs. In our opinion, the Village Police Department needs much greater oversight of Village Trustees. Having one trustee serve as the police liaison is ineffective, as the police liaison has no authority over the Southampton Village PD. That's not a criticism of Trustee McLaughlin. It's a function of the limitations of the position. The task force recommends that the trustees serve as the Village PD Oversight Board, that the chief report to the Oversight Board monthly, and that the Oversight Board approve major decisions in advance. Based upon the analysis and recommendations from the Hartnett Report, we recommend that the K-9 unit be disbanded, pulling the detective from the East End Drug Task Force, elimination of two other detective positions, and if not reimbursed by the town, consider making the school resources available for patrol duties most of their shifts, as opposed to being dedicated 100% of the time. We believe, and based upon the analysis from the Hartnett Group, reduction in positions will not have a material impact on the safety or service level levels to village residents and would save the village over $1 million per year in salary and benefits. While the village cannot unilaterally contract radio dispatch, if it were to do so, contracting the radio dispatch to a superior agency could save a substantial portion of the $1.9 million cost operating as an independent unit. We also recommend that the village seek to negotiate with the police and dispatch unions to modify existing collective bargaining agreements to allow the village to implement necessary changes to policies and procedures that are out of norm with other police departments. That summarizes our recommendations and report, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Craig, and thank you again to the Southampton Task Force, as well as to everybody who is serving the public. Just wanted to open this up to questions from any of the board members or any other comments from members of the task force.
I will say a couple things, and thank you to Elena and Craig for being here, and to the other members of the task force. I appreciate it. A couple things, I did ask some questions earlier and got the answers, so I won't go through that again. More importantly, what I want to tell the public is the fact that, as we, were trustees, did contract with the Ed Hartnett Group to do this police report, one of the things that I did not get a lot of was any... understanding what was going on during the months that it was going on. Craig did answer a couple of questions for me earlier, but even as of today, coming into here, I wasn't aware that this report, which is specifically the report of the task force, not the Ed Hartnett Report, so I think we need to establish that. The Ed Hartnett Report has not come out yet. The Board has not seen it. The Attorney, Ken Ray, has not seen it either. So, once that gets out, we have to distinguish between the Ed Hartnett Group and the Southampton Police Task Force Group. So, a lot of things could be running along the same. Craig did say a lot of these were from there, but also, there could be some interpretation that might be a little bit different from what the trustees will look at. We will look at everything from both, and we will make some serious decisions on what we have to do going forward for the police department and the public. But I just want that to be the steps of this report today that Craig is from the task force that the Board of Trustees put forward back in December, I believe it was. But the Ed Hartnett Report that we, the Board, hired with taxpayer money has yet to been released, so that's the comments I wanted to make.
I too want to thank the task force and Craig and Elena for all their hard work and the whole... Right, it was a lot of time and effort on everyone's end, and I...Craig, you did answer quite a few of my questions privately, so I want to thank you for that. And I will digest this report, and I will be very open to the public as to my viewpoint, and I want to communicate also with our police, make sure that we can implement these recommendations fairly equitably and for the benefit of the village. That's what we're here for, the benefit of the village. So, again, I want to thank everyone involved, and hope that we can, again, come to a reasonable and fair compromise.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the Board?
I think I'd just like to say I forgot that Elena and Dr. Greer and Tom and Bob spent a lot of time and were great assistants in preparation with this. Because of travel schedules, I'm the front man, but the other members contribute greatly.
And once again, I'd like to thank all of you for putting so much time and effort into this for our beautiful village. Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, our Chair Craig Goldberg, we've got Elena Williams here, thank you very much. Dr. Key, who's on the line, as well as Tom Kempner and Bob Barron as well. Before we make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I was, just wanted to open this up to any other members of the task force to see if there's additional comment. If there's no additional comment, that is okay as well, but just wanted to give any members of the task force any additional opportunity for comments.
So I thank you for your time and I understand that these are very difficult decisions and we've tried our best to be down the middle and fair to the police department as well as to the task force.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that said, if there's no further comment, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.